We're gonna do, we're gonna, we usually start our private attendance late, not tonight. People told me that they want to be out by nine o'clock and you're gonna do everything I can to get us out of here by nine o'clock. We're gonna start off with each candidate giving a two-minute statement of anything they want to about who they are, why they're running. And we have here a timekeeper. Everybody, everybody just up in the room and every guy who's a candidate, say the timekeeper. Okay. Susan is really mean, that's why we got her as the timekeeper. Okay. So she has a card that says you have one minute left, which will just be the first round. Then she has a card that says thirty seconds left. And then she has a card that says stop. So everybody needs to stop when their card says stop. You, you, you can't, you know, keep on going. That's the same thing when people ask questions, they have to finish the question in five, in one minute. And if you don't, I'm telling Susan to say, I'm sorry very much for interrupting you in the middle of our sentimental sentence, but, okay. So when you see the thirty-second sign, you need to wrap things up. So I think we're ready to go.
This is my turn.
Okay, that mine is done. So why don't we start off with an introductory statement by Crystal Barnett. I want to thank all of the candidates. We have twelve out of twelve candidates who are here this evening. That is really fantastic. Okay, so if we could...
We're gonna start with Crystal.
All right. Hey, all y'all for being here. I'm Crystal Barnett. I'm a North City resident, been here all of my life. I chose to send those public schools, one because I have a child that's educated too, but also because I have three things I care about. Honesty and transparency is one of them. Strong system in Lubbock is important, this district, this department, and I also believe that single public schools can improve. One of the things that I've been doing and I'll continue to do is doing the work underground. So we know what parents need, we know what they're asking for, we talk to educators, we know what they're asking for, and I believe if you've done the partnership. I also think with strong leadership, strong strategies, and real big implementation, we can change single public schools around. I know that there is a lot of things that have happened, I know there are a lot of things that people have been paying attention to, but I also think we need to think about the possibilities. And I'm not talking about spending time on ninety-nine more plans and ninety-nine more strategies. I'm talking about utilizing the things that we already have, implementing them on the ground properly, putting things and structures in place to make sure we're checking and make sure that our kids are actually growing and reading, and then supporting our teachers to do the best they can go in classrooms. So I hope to see you all on April eighth. And I do ask that you vote for Crystal Barnett for single public schools.
First and foremost, I'm here to recognize the power in this room and here to support our public schools. On your shoulders I stand, Taylon Brooks. But have you ever had a moment where you were motivated and inspired to take action, but the motivation changed once you got it to place? So a friend of mine called me, he said, I need your help. Our public schools are under attack and I need your help. So because I know my friend and she's dedicated to the public school system that the community needs, I jumped. But when I jumped, I realized that all of the concerns that the parents had in regards to our current school system, our public school board, that it wasn't correct. There was something wrong. So what motivates me now is to correct what needs to be fixed. So I originally wanted to run because I want to support a friend who has a good cause. But at the end of the day, what keeps me going today is that, for one, what we don't want is the inconsistent transportation. What we don't want is the shortage of our teachers and also a lack of active curriculum activity. That's what we have to fix. So our children should bear the burden of our systemic shortcomings and our misplaced priorities. Our children deserve better. So I'm here to address these challenges with dedication, transparency, accountability, and what matters the most is our education for our children with our public schools. I'm Taylon Brooks and I'm asking that you support what I stand for, our children and our public schools. Thank you.
Next we have Karen Collins Adams.
Good evening and thank you for allowing me to address everyone here tonight. I'm Dr. Karen Collins Adams. I'm currently a project director at Saint Louis University of Rising Teachers. I've been a lifelong educator from kindergarten through senior high school, high school, preschool, special educator. I'm still an advocate for students with special needs and believe in all of the things that are incumbent upon all of us to be able to participate, to be able to get our children to be able to learn and be progressive, active citizens in this city. One of the things that I want everyone to understand about my role in running for candidacy, every, being a candidate for the St. Louis Public Schools, that somewhere along the way in our recent history, we've lost a little bit of trust in this community for the kinds of things that we think our children should get. And when I say children, I mean anyone from kindergarten through senior high school. Our high school students with the career readiness need to be prepared to go to college and all be in the workforce. All of those things are important. The governance of the school board leads to those things. I hope that you throughout this process tonight will be able to hear some of the things that I believe in and that I plan on doing as a part of the, as a member of the St. Louis Public School Board. Dr. Karen Collins Adams, and just as my colleagues sit here, I need your vote.
Next we have Toni Cousins.
Thank you, everyone. Toni Cousins. Seems like everyone appears to think there's a lot going on on a bad level of the district and we do have our issues, but I want to share since I've been on board and in the three years that I've been on, I want to share the success that has occurred since I've been here. When I first came on, one of the first things we fought for is those privatizers that have fought to come after this district. And the first thing that they did was try to go after eighteen million dollars. I believe some of the people that were running now were quite low levels, going after that eighteen million dollars, where we tried to fight, where we pushed the board by fifteen fifty-eight to prevent taking resources from our schools. We were able to successfully prevent that where we were able to get funds locked in and ensure that resources stay within our children. The other things we were able to do was push for the C Y plan, which again privatizers were trying to come in and take over. The C Y plan was moving to make sure that we were coming up with plans to look at how do we rebound and look at education as a whole, which we've been working on. We also brought in Horizon Max, which we haven't done. We also came up with plans for all day offensive, which hasn't been done and has been successful. And most of all, you know, we have Prop S, which we definitely have been able to implement and put new restrooms and new roofing on our buildings within the schools. I'm running for the school board again because we still have work to do. So I hope you all see the positive things that we're doing and addressing those things in the government and contrary to what people are saying or reading on, so our kids can remain, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much Toni Cousins. And next we're gonna hear from Zachariah Davis.
Good evening, everyone. So glad to be here. My name is Zachariah Davis. I am a fifteen-year resident here in St. Louis Public Area. When I first moved here, fifteen years ago, I lived in the county. And I was there for about a year and I wanted my daughter to go to St. Louis Public Schools. And so we moved out of the county to the city and we've been living in the city ever since. I'm a father. I'm an educator. I've been an educator for two years. I got my start as a second career teaching in St. Louis Public Schools. Not only am I a father and educator, I'm a community member and I'm a taxpayer. And I decided to run for St. Louis Public Schools and be on the board because I'm not happy about all of the directions that our school district is going. And so I'd like to see our school district do a one-eighty in certain areas. The three things that really concern me tonight, of course, are literacy rates, of course, black children in our school district are reading somewhere around fifteen to twenty percent proficiency. The other thing that concerns me the most, of course, is the living wage for school teachers. I'm a school teacher. I get up every day and I go and sit in a classroom and teach. I know what we deal with, I know what we go through. And so school teachers and educators need a living wage, a living wage so they don't have to have a second, a third, a fourth job. The fourth thing that I'm concerned about in our school district is strong governance. And I don't believe that our current school district, our current school board, has exemplified the governance that we need. And so I'm asking for your vote tonight. Again, my name is Dr. Zach Davis. You can visit my website, W W W dot davis, S L D S. I need your vote, I'm gonna earn your vote, and we need your trust again. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Davis. Okay, that's, I'm sorry. I was... I started using the microphone. Okay, next we're gonna hear from David Johnson.
Good evening and thank you to everyone who came out in the room, whether you are a city resident or not. You are showing the interest in educating our kids. Number one, educating our kids. I would even like to challenge anyone in this room to visit one of our high schools, especially those high schools on the north side. Go into the classroom of one class and listen to them read. I cried. I'm sixty-seven years old, been in St. Louis my whole life. I cried listening to our children trying to read. That's horrible. This is a billion-dollar corporation and we got kids that can't even read on grade eleven. I don't understand. One of the reasons I'm running is to give you a voice, to give you your ears, because I tell the truth. I tell it like it is. Yeah, there's, there's good things the school has, the system has done, but they don't outweigh the bad. Our school district is in trouble and you're gonna hear about it over the weeks and not just from St. Louis, but from Jefferson City. One of the reasons that I believe it's in trouble is because we have a board that is not educated on the school system. They don't know. You, you had one member that resigned, she told you. She didn't know, she had no training. That's why it's happening the way it is. There, there was no training. So I'm running for the board to bring my experience, which I've had eight on the board of education, one in governance, and seven when the state stepped in. But the, the elected board that was standing there elected me as a liaison with the special administrative board. Thank you.
Thank you very much, David Jackson. Next we're gonna hear from Brian Marsden. Brian.
Hi. My name is Brian Marsden. I think I'm the only candidate who currently has kids enrolled in SLPS, one of whom is sitting right back there. Hi, Molly. I've been an S L, S P, SLPS parent since two thousand twelve. I'm the only candidate who filed a January quarterly report with the Missouri Ethics Commission. That's an indication of my commitment to ethics, transparency, and accurate accounting. I'm a first-generation college graduate with an education degree, so I have degrees in math and philosophy. I'd be a certified high school math and Spanish teacher if I'd done my student-teacher my senior year. Instead, I started a web development company because I fell in love with the idea that information wants to be free. I have more than twenty-five years of IT experience. I'm good with spreadsheets and making systems and processes more efficient. The hardest and most meaningful thing I've done is being the director of North St. Louis Youth Build, a construction training and G D program in the high-part neighborhood. I worked with neighborhood residents, students, board members, union representatives, social workers, parole officers, politicians, government officials, donors, and volunteers to build the program from the ground up. We converted a two-story Sunday school to a two-family building. When we started, the roof was in the basement, which was a metaphor for a lot of things. Some of the eighteen to twenty-four-year-old students entered the program with fourth-grade reading levels. Youth Build was housed by the owner of Nineteenth and New House, Freedens Church, which suffered a horrible fire two days ago on Monday, Dr. Marsden, if it came to any. I'm still trying to process that. In other volunteer roles, I've been the president of the Common Space, Metropolis St. Louis, and my neighborhood association, and vice president of E Works and its vice of works and my works programs. I have a solid track record working with people in North City, South City, the central corridor, to help make St. Louis a better place.
Thank you very much, Brian Marsden. Next we're gonna hear from Robert Mason.
Thank you all for coming tonight. A little bit about myself is I'm a real estate developer and a philanthropist. Currently, I sit on the board of Aim Home Children Family Services and Georgetown Sound Community Corporation. Born and raised in St. Louis, I actually grew up in the Skidmore neighborhood of the street. My work on philanthropy is geared towards children, being donated to St. Jude's to help fund campus research for children, just down Main Streets, to help out the children and get a school giveaway, and Children's Services for the family vest, and different activities like that. The reason I'm running is to bring that expertise to St. Louis and all the children there and bridge the gap between the families and the students and the teachers. And if you vote for me, that'll happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Robert Mason. And next we have William Monroe. Mr. Monroe.
Thank you. I was, I was a bit surprised, sitting at the end of this table, listening to people who represent the St. Louis Public Schools and others. No mental security, no mental transportation, no mental, no mental issues that our children have to face on a daily, on a daily. And I would, I would say that we desperately need change. Desperately. The St. Louis Public Schools has at least a half a dozen programs on the shelf. At least a half a dozen. And the, um, the, uh, the, uh, plan, C Y plan is another one on the shelf. And I, and I want to say this, I have a question because Bill Monroe attends every board meeting that the St. Louis Public School has. And I thank God that this meeting wasn't held on public school property because I've been banned from public school property for speaking out as we speak now. I've been banned. So thank God that we have this meeting here where we can get together. Where am I with my minutes now?
We have nineteen seconds.
Nineteen seconds. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill Monroe. I'll get your name before you...
I have.
Okay. And next we have Carrie Powers.
Hi there. I am a lifelong city resident and currently living in Dogtown. I, according to The American, was a Democratic committee woman of the former Twenty-Fourth Ward for ten years. But what they didn't say is that my undergrad degree is elementary education with a cognitive minor in early childhood. My master's degree was from the George Warren Brown School of Social Work, which is now Brown School at Washington University, mental health concentration, family therapy specialization. And then I did two years post-grad at the St. Louis Psychoanalytic Institute. I have taught school. I have worked in child welfare, which ate me alive. I have done therapy in a private practice and worked in outpatient behavioral program for people living with chronic mental illness. I am concerned about several things about our schools. And number one is that we need to know the difference between discipline and punishment. Punishment doesn't teach anything. Discipline teaches self-control, identification of one's emotions, and how to deal. And we need to provide that foundation for an environment for effective learning. There's a lot more I could say about agreeing to disagree respectfully and not being disruptive. It's counterproductive to everything, and that's it.
There. Thank you, thank you very much, Carrie Powers. Last we have comments from Andre Walker.
Um, I'm excited to be here. I'm really excited to be here. My name is Andre Walker. I've been an investment manager in St. Louis City for the last twenty-five years. Before that, I was in the army for eight years. Actually learned how, how to lead twenty-five years ago. I know how to do this, but what I want to say is what brought me to running for the St. Louis City School Board? My son is a senior and we're looking for colleges for him. As we went around looking at all these universities, what I noticed was there is an extreme disparity when we talk about young black men. And most universities, I would say, when I say most universities, Washington State Louis, University of Illinois, Lizzu, black men probably make up two percent of the overall student population. And nobody's paying attention to that. Nobody's mentioning that. Black women, our women got blessed and they've done great, and what we're asking them to is help us, is, is help, help us pull our young black men up. So I'm running to bring light to those things. And in order to do that, we have to improve the quality of St. Louis Public Schools. Right now, we have twenty thousand kids, or a little bit less than twenty thousand kids enrolled in St. Louis Public Schools. Number one, forty, fifty years ago, we had a hundred thousand kids enrolled in St. Louis Public Schools. So we have a lot of dead space that we have to figure out that's being pushed, pushed, pushed down the road. That's decreasing the quality of the schools. So in order to, and so many things I want to get to, teacher pay. There's an extreme correlation between higher teacher pay and student success. So which means that the more teachers are paid, the more, the better students learn because teachers don't have to spend so much time worrying about who's going to fix their house, worrying about whether they're doing themselves. Little things like that help out quite a bit. I won't hear a lot of discussion about that. Y'all, my time's up. Well, thank you. My name is Andre Walker. Vote for me or whoever you think is the best to lead St. Louis forward.
Andre Walker. Andre, thank you very much. Okay, Chantel. I'm gonna introduce you next. Okay, everybody should have a sheet like this. We, we sent out questionnaires to all the twelve candidates and eight of the twelve sent them back and so you can see which questions they answered yes or no to. We asked the co-standards and co-hosting organizations to join us for a question. So Chantel, all the co-hosting organizations will have one minute, one minute for their question, and then each candidate will have one minute to respond.
Good evening, everyone. I have a curriculum question for the candidates. It's a two-part. So what curriculum proposal do you advocate to incorporate the teaching of Black history from kindergarten to twelfth grade? And also implementing a curriculum that will guide our youth to skilled professions in the area of chemistry, engineering, medicine, finance, economics, agriculture, law, and education?
Thank you very much, Chantel. Okay, we're going to start with Taylon Brooks. You go down the list again, and then we'll end up with Crystal Barnett. Taylon Brooks.
If I understood you correctly, you're asking about extracurricular activity?
No, 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 no. The regular curriculum. We're working on for our kindergarten to twelfth grade for Black History and other classes, other subjects as well as chemistry, law, medicine, finance, et cetera.
Okay. So Black History, it's a way of life, so it should be incorporated in our education. For one, Black History is not just a month. It should be incorporated every day in our school because that's who we are, simple as that. Now, the other activity that you asked about, the, the finance...
Those are not activities. Those, that's a curriculum.
The curriculum. So the, the finance and the other ones you mentioned. If you remember, during the pandemic, there were skills that were actually kept moving forward. So that is important. Those are skills that our children should, those are basic skills that our children, our families should learn, and I'm so supportive of that. So what would I do? This whole room is full of experts. Our children need that in their life. Thank you.
Thank you, Taylon. Okay.
I need to know where, what organization you represent in?
The Universal African People Organization.
The Universal African People. Boards do not produce curriculum. We govern those aspects of the things that are happening in the school district. Curriculum, and, you know, the curriculum are all recommended to the board and it's up to us to be able to review and approve. I think that as we look at processes and procedures of things that are happening in schools and school districts, we would review what brought to us. We don't actually implement the school district, the superintendent's responsible for creating a team to be able to get them to produce those kinds of materials to bring forward to the board, and then the board approves it. A strong curriculum, yes, does lead to a great school system, and those strong curriculums have to be monitored by the district, not the actual school board. What we do is monitor that process to get it to us.
That is correct. It's actually the role of the chief academic officer. And what the board would do is, or ask, once the superintendent brings it to the board, they normally have the chief academic officer present to the board at the board meeting and it's reviewed and then that's what moves.
So in regards to the, there is not being a Black History curriculum, what, as a board member, how could you fight to make sure that?
It can be written down.
It can be written down.
Yes.
Um, I think, um, the board is not, that's not the purview of the board. Again, our job is to oversee and get governance. It's the attendant, which I'm the chief academic officer. Those who are in the school district, it's their job to decide what curriculum we'll spread.
As I stated in my opening remarks, I'm a little different from a lot of other folks. Our school board is a traditional school board. Those are changing across the country. There's no more traditional school boards. We have to be involved with the curriculum. We have to approve the curriculum. We have to ensure that out of those seventeen hundred different learning programs at the school board, how many are working? I guarantee you couldn't get an answer. So yes, I support any curriculum that talks Black History. I support any curriculum that teaches our kids a job skill. Thank you.
I've set out a concern about how history is taught in our schools. For too long, it's been whitewashed, it's been his story. So seeing my kids go to those schools now, I, I think there's been progress, Taylon. History is taught differently than when I was going through. So I think the trade is in the right direction that could improve even further. As far as science, technology, engineering, math, education, again, I've been working in IT for twenty-five years and I actually started a company a few years ago called Code Stetter that was to teach adults web development as a career path. And it was sort of like, it was like Launch Code before Launch Code and now Jim and Kelly. So I can get... and held Jim Akeldy, so he didn't get his arm. I was trying.
It's not in the purview for the board to handle curriculum. However, if a memorandum of understanding was drafted between trade schools and the district, I'd highly support that to teach them skilled trades and different opportunities and grant them mentorship.
I've learned more about Black history when I was 70 and 70-something. And I've learned more about Black history in the last five years of my life, primarily because of the way that it's been disseminated now. But we must realize that we have just received the president whose goal is to erase any of these businesses. So we must understand the necessity of a board to be honestly understanding of the impact of what's about to happen to our children.
That's right.
And we must create these information, these knowledge, these curriculum so that our children won't be left out as much as we are.
I don't know at this juncture what the board is responsible for and what is without its purview. I do know, as my elder here, Bill Monroe, has said, I too have learned more about other cultures than my white, scrummy Dutch upbringing in South City gave me. I knew that George Washington Carter did a lot of things with peanuts. But what we can do from kindergarten on is give children a mirror and reflect on what they see and reframe their self criticisms into positives and to let them know what other people did and didn't do.
Just a point of clarification on the question. You were talking about trade skills. You were talking about STEM classes and African-American history. Okay, so you know, this leads to what I was saying before. First of all, to answer the question directly, what I do is have a national search for a superintendent that's willing to focus on that particular type of curriculum. I'm not interested in trade skills. I'm interested in having our kids become the best they can be, to become leaders, become doctors, become lawyers, and to be the top in our community. And some may very well decide to go to trade school, and that's okay. But I am not setting the bar low. I'm setting the bar high, and I'm looking for a superintendent that's willing to set that bar high. And if they cannot, if they cannot meet those goals, then we'll find the next superintendent. There will be no contract guarantee for me. What we're doing is looking at these superintendents from year to year and giving them an in-depth evaluation of what's going on. And if we're just average among communities like St. Louis, that's not good enough for me. We need to be average among the top communities in the nation, and the top communities in Missouri.
Very nice! So my question, so I have a follow-up statement with that. So my interaction with other superintendents, they said that the Black history curriculum is usually at the school level.
We've got to mount everybody's time.
Okay.
Okay, let's not forget about Krista Mornet.
I heard your question, and I do think the board has something to do with how you can govern and give Black history and law, mathematics, science, and chemistry back in schools. I also know that with presenting recommendations, we can also hold the superintendent responsible for how he then responds to the needs of students. And I really think that's what you were asking.
That's right.
So as a board member, that is what I would be doing, where I cannot go down into Jay-Z operations to see how things are happening on the ground. I can't set the guidelines and governance for what direction the district is going in in order for our students to reach and access these things that they're not getting at a top level. That is a board member's responsibility, and it's something that I would be committed to. But I'll stop to say this. If we don't step down and get really clear on our students' reading, it won't matter what else we add to any curriculum because they won't be able to understand it or comprehend it. So to ensure that we can do and go beyond the basics, the very minimums of the things that people expect for our children to achieve, those are also the things that I would be doing as a board member. We have to shoot beyond where we are right now to get to where we're supposed to go. I'm starting. I'll just leave this out.
Byron. Could you come up? The next question is going to be from a representative of the American Federation of Teachers, Local 420.
You have the question in front of you now?
Yes.
One more.
I'm glad you're all here. Thank you. I'm here next. Let's have a round of applause. We represent about 2,000 people in the St. Louis public schools. Our question is, rather than closing St. Louis public schools, would you support repurposing schools into full-service community schools with grant ground services as well as housing for unhoused SLPS parents? Thank you.
Question, question.
Okay. We're going to start off this time with Karen Collins Adams.
I truly believe that if we have viable buildings, then we should repurpose them, be able to use them to benefit the community. That comes with an expense, and it would have to also cover the voice of the community to be able to get the right things in those buildings. With housing, I don't know how we would be able to repurpose schools to be able to provide housing for our community. But I'm sure that that would involve city ordinance and some other things that we would have to look into. And it would take a little bit of research. It shouldn't take very long. It's not a short process, but it shouldn't take forever, which you do. One of the things that we have to really consider is if we have a building in a neighborhood and we're not using it, and it is costing us more to just leave it vacant.
Actually, that's one of the things that came out of the citywide education plan that, you know, some think is just sitting on a shelf. We're actually working to do that. Northwest was one of the schools that we're working on to actually use. We, unknown to a lot of people, Northwest is one of the schools that we're working on. We actually received $4.25 million on a federal grant. People don't realize that 500 of our youth are unhoused. They don't have adequate housing. So that's one of the schools that we've identified to actually have as a housing facility for our students as well as a community school as well as an educational facility. So those are things that we're actually doing. We absolutely are supporting the full service schools in conjunction with AFT Local 420.
Thank you, Madam President.
I believe that all of us would like to see the repurposing of buildings. I think my question oftentimes is, you know, what other partners would be willing to come alongside the school district to see that happen? You know, it's one thing, you know, for the school district to, as our board president has said, get into the real estate business. It's one thing for them to do that, and I think that they're doing a fairly decent job in that particular regard. But the reason why probably some of these buildings are still vacant is because there have not been enough partners to come alongside. What is our city doing, you know? What is our city mayor doing? What other developers are we speaking with to come alongside to help repurpose those buildings? We can't just put the complete onus on the school district to repurpose those buildings. But do I support the repurposing of them? Absolutely, I do. Because we don't want them to end up as outsourced or just condemned, if you will, in our communities. I spoke with another young lady recently, and she was just talking about a particular school and how long it's been a deal. Thank you.
You know, that is a complicated question. And what the school district needs to do is educate the community on those schools that have clones and why they can't sell those to developers. Those schools cost way too much to retrofit into apartments. It's just not worth it. One of the things I propose to the special administrative board is being a co-developer with these developers who wanted to purchase those buildings but didn't have enough money to complete the retrofit. And so it gives the school district another source of funding by being a co-developer with that developer. Because if the building is on sale for $1 million, that's the school district's investment into that developer's project, $1 million. And we can recoup those over the years. So it's really complicated. And then we have to, the school system has to set out a city plan to find out what neighborhoods are dwindling in households and what neighborhoods are also increasing in households.
One of St. Louis's greatest assets is its historic architecture. So I would absolutely want to seek out organizations to repurpose vacant schools, to find developers and nonprofit organizations willing to turn those buildings into housing or places that can provide health care or childcare, to be youth activity centers and provide other services that benefit the neighborhoods. It's really, it's a matter of equity that these neighborhoods need those assets as community anchors to be a source of pride for the neighborhood. And I'd hate to see a school close down and it's being an empty shell where there was once a place that people cared about.
Well, for this question, I'll work with the St. Louis Development Corporation to get tax incentives to other developers to enhance these abandoned schools. Work with the different schools to have the unhoused children and their families live there as well as honor low-income housing of their teachers and work in that district.
I would invite all of the audience tonight when you get in, go to YouTube, and then go to SLPS, St. Louis School Board Education. Then I want you to go to Public Economy. And then I want you to see those of us who've been standing before this school board for more than a decade. I'm Bill Monroe. I have a nonprofit called Harriet Tucker. And I was actually one of the first Black providers of charter schools here in Harriet, the third at Marshall. And I asked Miss Cousins one day, "Why can't Bill Monroe, the only man who's ever introduced a charter school, set on the citywide plan?" And she screamed that in hollering. Very disrespectful.
The question that has been asked is something that I wanted to talk with Tony Cousins about sometime in the future because I'm passionate about our unhoused and particularly families with children that have no stability when it comes to housing. In this frigid weather that we've been experiencing, we see how critical housing is. And everybody who's had experience with our public schools can say the impact of not having adequate housing. There was an article in the paper today about a 75-bed recovery program, and they're planning to spend over $4 million to refit.
Okay, repurposing a school. Look, I think it's a great idea if we can do it in a cost-effective way. But on a school board, we have a purpose to educate these kids, and that comes first for me. If we can repurpose the schools that are vacant and the ones that will become vacant in some cost-effective way, then so be it. But I would not want to spend my first couple of years doing that. We need to spend our first couple of years bringing quality back to the St. Louis Public School District and bringing a degree of trust from the community so that they can see, they're willing to send our kids there. Because as I was saying in my opening statement, we have less than 20,000 kids in the SLPS. But in the city, we have something like 50,000 kids. So that's telling you that we don't have the trust that we need in order to allow families to send their kids to SLPS. And I'd like to end up there.
Okay, two more. Is Lou Aaron Strong here?
It's fine. I should have said something, a gentleman at the end, but I'm capping out it to say that I don't think it's the full responsibility of St. Louis public schools to think about all of our social issues. But I do think it raises our responsibility to think about how we collaborate in ways where we allow people who are already doing certain things to continue to do it and do it well. So for people who are already working with housing, we need to let them lead those initiatives. For people who understand how to redevelop and repurpose buildings, we need to let them lead. How we then lean in is to say and make sure that the folks in our issue and the kids who really need it can access it and access it in a way that it doesn't cause harm. So yes, I would like to support it. But to his sentiment, if we don't start thinking about quality, then we'll then yet create another set of kids or another set of families who are not able to do the things that humans should be able to do, which is live, learn, grow, be successful, and have strong pathways. And that's what school boards prioritize. We must lean in with our city, with the rest of the people, with the rest of the corporations, with the rest of nonprofits.
Mrs. Stipe? Thank you.
I'm a product of a full-service community school. I was raised my whole life. Which means that where I am today is because where I came from. I work for a management group called Show Me Peace. And what I realized in the community is that our children, first of all, education starts at home. And if the home isn't satisfied or in order, then how in the world are you going to get the schools to work together? We have to join forces with the family. We need to provide the resources to the family because our children go to school hungry. How is everyone going to go to school and study? They're hungry. And if school isn't in harmony with the household, it will never work. So I'm a product, and my family is here because I'm a product of where I came from.
Everybody, okay. We're next going to hear from Lou Aaron Strong, who is with the St. Louis Democratic Socialists of America.
Washington University owns hundreds of millions of dollars of property throughout St. Louis City that they don't pay property taxes on, which deprives our school district of much-needed resources. Which is why the Democratic Socialists of America, the American Federation of Teachers, and the Parent Action Council have called on Washington University to pay their fair share, at least $12 million a year, to our public school district in the same way that Harvard, University of Pennsylvania, and other elite institutions do. Our first question is, will you, along with our coalition, along with the over 1,700 people who have signed our petition, call on Washington University to pay at least $12 million a year through a non-binding resolution at the school board level? Next question, to build on Byron's question earlier, would you commit to moving that funding, if received from Washington University, to fund housing through a full-services community schools model? Thank you.
I can emphasize with that, ever since Washington University fired me because they didn't think that environmental psychology was an interesting course to take.
I would not just do Washington University, but I think it should also, as well. I think that is definitely something that is needed, and that is something that we were actually working on prior to this. Absolutely, yes. I think it's something that needs and should be done. And I think it's something that would help in moving forward on the housing challenges that we're having, especially not only for the children and families, but also for the teachers. That's something that could be used to help our teachers with adequate housing.
I believe everybody ought to pay their fair share of taxes. I believe my fair share, you ought to pay your fair share. I believe that entities ought to pay their fair share. And those school universities that he mentioned, those school districts do very well because their tax base is well-supported. So, if Washington University, St. Louis University, and any other person who lives in the city pays their fair share of taxes, why would not our school district not do well? So, absolutely, why would I not support that? I absolutely do. I believe St. Louis Public Schools should be the crown jewel of St. Louis City. And it takes money to run a quality school.
If you like it as a board, I mean, yes, I am in support of taxing all the universities, as well as all the businesses in the city of St. Louis pay real estate taxes. Why shouldn't the universities? They are some of the largest real estate holders in this city, especially St. Louis U. So, you know, they can build, right now they're building another children's hospital at Grand, at the show room. That's $100 million. And that's that entire zone cannot be in one dime of excess.
I would be in favor of WashU making payments in lieu of taxes. Or Pulpilis is the acronym for it. As mentioned, a lot of top schools like Harvard, Penn, Stanford all do it. WashU wants to be in that company. This is a way to do that. It's also a way for WashU to visibly make good on its "In St. Louis, for St. Louis" campaign. I'll say WashU does a whole lot already for the community. It's contributed $8.8 billion to the local economy in the last year. But it can always do more, especially when it has a $12 billion endowment. So, a $12 million payment is small in comparison with the endowment that it's sitting on. I would also include Slu with WashU in making those payments because those universities are acting as developers. So, they're not just educational institutions, but they're doing development for student housing off-campus.
I must definitely think Slu or WashU should give money to our St. Louis City Public Schools. As organizations that have education at the forefront, they should be the first in line to do such.
I also believe that they should contribute. And I also believe that we must make sure, have you read the St. Louis School Board? Those entities that would abuse those funds, they got it. As we've witnessed, I do believe they should contribute.
This is me behaving when provoked. The sins of one cannot be spread to many. Money corrupts. The love of money corrupts. But what we're talking about is being fair and equitable in distribution of funds to give our children hope and a future. I'm 100% as an alumni of WashU behind the idea of asking them to contribute $12 million a year.
Okay, I'm certainly behind the idea of having WashU and St. Louis University donate more to the St. Louis community. But I'd like to see it different ways. I'd like to see it differently from scholarships. So that, you know, I want to see more city kids in that WashU. I want to see more city kids at St. Louis U. By the way, I'd like to see more city kids at O.T. And so, that way, we know that we're seeing a product for those dollars. And those debt money won't get lost in a bureaucracy of a school. That's it, I'm with you.
Yes, I'm in support of $12 million. But as a St. Louis U grad, I definitely think you should hit St. Louis U's roof. They tried to take over Grand, going south and north. And they were going there when I was still there, and they skipped on it. But the other question they asked was full-service community school models. And I'm 100% agree with that. I think it will help students who don't come from stable homes. It will also help students who are living in shelters or living on streets, some that we've met. It'll also help families to get stabilized where they live as well. I think it will be more of a community feel and also a contributor. And then, as far as how the money gets allocated, I think it needs to be a clear path of how it's allocated, not just dumped in a pot and sitting there for one day for just random people to decide. So, yes, I'm in support of it as long as there is a clear path for how the money is given.
I am also in support of anyone that has a hand in a public school education should pay their share of taxes, even all the schools. But I'm also, I agree with what you said at the end, I forgot your name. But I want to see those tax dollars returned in a different way. Maybe we can use it as an incentive for our children in the city public schools that if you go to school in the city, then you can actually go to WashU on a scholarship to go apply. Because if you didn't give back taxes, they can get lost, someone can spend it again. There's no accountability in that. So, I want to see those tax dollars given back to the city where it's some kind of, where WashU can feel good about it, and the city can feel good about it, and that can be used as an incentive for our children to come to go to school.
What is the young advocate that stood up to address us? So, are you, this is an active campaign to be able to give Washington University to be able to provide the tax funds to the school district?
That's correct.
Okay. I believe everybody should pay their taxes. I pay a enormous amount of taxes. And I'm proud to do that because I know what percentage of it actually goes in the public schools. That's a large percentage of our property taxes go in the public schools. So, if anyone owns property within the city, then this needs to be able to be able to pay taxes and put that money where, in our educational system. How we allocate that after that is a different story. But first, we have to get it.
Okay, the next question is from Community One Project. Carla Alexander wrote the question, but she was not able to join us tonight. So, she asked me to read the question for her. The Communities One Project is a grassroots collaboration from all walks of life who are in the fight for equity, democracy, and preserving our children's neighborhood democratically run public schools. Who funds your campaign? That is, what organization, PACs, and individuals have provided money to support your candidacy? Please begin with the top donors and work your way down to the sources that have donated the list.
Well, so far, I'm the only donor to my campaign, so I don't have a lot to share. So, I don't know what else I need to say after that. But, you know, if anyone wants to donate, who more than we'll do this.
I am the only contributor to our campaign. And I haven't even been able to sell with the state to even accept any donations. Previous campaigns have been paid out of my pocket. My wife helped me a little bit, but mostly out of my pocket. And I just, you know, for some reason, I have a hard time in this city, especially with our different marriage. Because I'm not going to accept anything if they would expect something in return. I don't do that. That's one of the reasons why I failed when I ran for the school board the second time. Because a big contributor asked me to do something that I wouldn't do, and say that his organization wouldn't support me.
Wouldn't support you?
So, I'm not looking at taking any of the campaign donations, and I will continue to go into the ladder count to move them.
She said, William S. Burroughs lied about this. He said, "An old junk pusher once told me, 'Watch whose money he picked up.'" So, I'm the only one so far who's filed a quarterly report with the Missouri Athletics Commission. Want to go to nec.moe.gov. Every contribution is listed there. I've raised about $30,000 so far, all from friends and family. I've made zero asks, solicited zero donations. People just believed in me and donated, people from the community. And that's how I intend to run my campaign.
Currently, only I donate to my campaign helps keep everything living.
Who asked the question? I have another answer here with this card.
If you look on the very bottom, it says you paid for the funding.
Repeat after me. Cash App, dollar sign, five, L U E. Repeat after me. The other day, I got $22 hours. And I was gonna go get some more brochures. Right now, I'm enough for my cash app. So, repeat after me. Cash App, dollar sign, five, L U E. Listen for Bill Monroe.
I haven't gotten that far in terms of funding. I'm getting mailers from out of town, and I already know who I'm gonna ask to print my yard signs. But I have to get them formatted first. I liked what David Jackson said. You don't take money from people who pay to play, want something back. And I've been around long enough that a lot of people know me and either are willing or not willing to help me get elected because they think I would make some contributions to the board and thereby to our children. But I'm working on a funding that's down my list on things to do. Thank you.
I would be honored to be elected to the board of education. But my primary purpose for running was to bring awareness to the disparity between African-American and everybody else's educational progress. I'd love to fight for this on the board. My plan is, I'll use my own money. You'll see some yard signs, you may see some billboards out there, you'll see some fuckups and Facebook ads out there. But I don't plan on asking anybody for a donation. I don't even have a website set up. But once I do, the very first thing you're gonna see on there is, I want you to look at how I have the research posted of the disparities between African-American and everyone else, and the thing that we need to do to uplift us in our community.
I do have an active account. All of the money there is approximately almost $400. Came from all friends and family. Don't have any big corps or anybody else backing my campaign, nor have I asked them to. I've also actually believed my own funds to run this strong campaign to be a board member for St. Louis Public Schools.
First, I want to address the person on the end, the first campaign brother. It should be chapter in EC, the House of Five. So, that's the first thing. The second thing is, the second thing is, as I said before, I'm a community-based individual. If you know me in this audience, stand up, please. Stand up if you know me. Everybody here who knows me has an organization, they are community-based. This is the community campaign. I run an organization for the community. Our children need the community. It's a nothing to do with nobody giving you no money, because I'm not gonna take it. They try to, but I'm not gonna take it. This is about our children. So, I support community service schools. I support this campaign with my whole heart, and my team is dedicated to supporting this campaign as well. So, you can have your money, because I have my own.
Well, this is new to me. I am supporting my own campaign, and if you want to check, there's only $500 in it so far, so that's all my money. I work, I've worked in multiple school districts. I have individuals that I'm associated with, and they believe in what I'm saying and what I want to do on the school board. So, I'm relying on the support and work of the individuals that I have connected with. My dollars are still from the last campaign I ran, which was from the community. So, I still serve the people, and I still receive funds from them.
Thank you, okay. Joe, I'm sorry, I'm Jay Ozier, from with the community of Black Trade Unis.
No, he butchered it up, but it's been butchered before, and I've been probably worse than that. You know, they, but anyway. My name is Jay Ozier, and the vice president of the St. Louis chapter of the Coalition of Black Trade Unis, and a lifelong resident of St. Louis City. I would like for each of the candidates before us to provide the what information that you all know about this Opportunity Trust that has been around in St. Louis City for the last several years. Opportunity Trust.
Okay, we're gonna start, we're gonna start with David Jackson.
I started researching Opportunity Trust back on my second term on the board. I think it was right around 2010. And found out that Opportunity Trust is an organization ran by the Republican Party that are looking at trying to come into cities, especially in urban communities, and use school vouchers to kind of dwindle or move out the public school system. I don't have to tell you, if you're in this room, you realize or you know that education is a very lucrative business. Like I said earlier, our school district is not growing. We receive, we have a budget of close to $300 million, but we receive an additional $300 million in grants. And so, you're talking about almost a billion dollars. So, why can't our schools teach our kids?
Opportunity Trust, if you're not familiar with it, is an organization that is set up to promote charter schools, and they run candidates to infiltrate public school districts. They're backed by millionaires looking to take public money and put it in their private pockets. And what they excel at is marketing. And if you look at the student outcomes, most of these charter schools don't have better math test scores than the public schools. Additionally, they operate in the shadows. I mean, there's been a lot of attention paid to St. Louis Public Schools, and rightfully so. It's because the board meetings are public, because the finances are public. It's because the board meetings are public, because the finances are public in a matter of open records. Whereas I guarantee you, at these charter schools, much worse things are going on. It's just that people aren't able to.
Opportunity Trust is an organization that wants to make money off education. That's pure and simple. Use charter schools to bush that agenda and make St. Louis Public Schools look terrible in process. The more that they jerk it up.
I don't know enough about Opportunity Trust to comment. Let me be honest. However. However. I'm the founder of the first black charter school in the city. I'm very much. And these organizations, those ahead of us, white people, were not happy with black men in pursuit of educating their community and calling out the deficit that we see. We see very few black men on these roads. Has a reason. Charter schools were originally designed to offset the deficit that we experience as black people in our community. But financing a charter school for a black man is impossible. Because race is a factor in this town and all things.
I am not a proponent of charter schools. I'm a product of the St. Louis Public School System. Proud graduate of Roosevelt High School, which is going to celebrate 100 years in existence this year. And I worked in church schools where the principal and the administrative do not have educational backgrounds, didn't even have business management backgrounds. And the rules of reg changed on whim. It was very confusing for the staff and for the students. I want accountability and transparency, which used to be buzzwords in campaigning. And I know that we can regain the trust of the public by being judicious.
Opportunity Trust. You know, I just don't think Opportunity Trust is the point.
Thank you.
If we have quality schools, there will be no families praying to get them to switch their kids over to charter schools. And so we have to, and to the teachers that are here, I'm sure that all of SOPS is not below average. But we have to enhance the reputation of our schools and we have to start that with great guns, adequate access.
Are you for Opportunity Trust or not?
To be clear, no, I'm not for Opportunity Trust. But I just don't think it's the point. I mean, if we have quality schools, we just won't have anybody praying.
That was the question.
All right, I'm very familiar with Opportunity Trust. They have been a pillar of our organization for the last seven years. They've contributed a great deal of money to me, even having to do the work on the ground with the families who we have helped up until this point. I've also seen the investment that the Opportunity Trust has made in other districts that have helped them to do things that I believe we can still do here in St. Louis Public Schools. I find it very interesting that they always come up on these conversations instead of us measuring on the things that actually matter. And then my last thing is to say that I don't know that you actually we are in support of Opportunity Trust. I'm in support of anyone that says support of kids. I have no interest in talking about different institutions or different places where both sets of children are things that I care about. If any single person is willing to invest in a way where a child can thrive, I'm gonna work with them because I believe in collaboration. I don't have to agree with everything and every method of math that they agree to in order for us to find a common ground to want children to do well in whatever school they chose to attend. I'm not funded by no one. You gotta check this G P C, love. I'm not funded by no one, but the people that support me. As I've always been. I said my organization was, just so we're clear.
Yeah, let you give everyone a chance to talk.
So Opportunity Trust, the minute I filed to run, that name has been ringing in my ear since day one. So I'm not in support of anyone that is trying to demolish our public school. So if that's what Opportunity Trust is doing, I'm not for it. Or anyone else. This is a community public school. The community should have control or a voice in the school so it can drive. So Opportunity Trust, whoever you are and whoever else, you know, thank you for coming. Our goal is to market our public schools so that no one else can take our children. So I'm for public schools.
I don't have enough information to be able to know everything about Opportunity Trust. Other than the fact that I really, they do provide, they raise money, a tremendous amount of money. And the person that runs it has been successful in other programs outside of St. Louis, came back to St. Louis and is trying to do the same thing here. But everyone sitting in this room has a responsibility to help public education if you're in here because you believe in it. So regardless of who's putting funds up in front of you to be able to do something, you make that choice. And so when we support a group that's actually putting money up to be able to start new charter schools? No, I don't believe that we should be able to pay our general public services. Is that what's happening here? I have to research it more to know. But I'm just saying, everyone here, no, everyone here has a choice. Everyone. I don't know what they're doing, but we all have a choice. And we should have a voice in the community.
What I love is Project 2025 is alive and well. Project 2025 is alive and well. And Opportunity Trust is absolutely a part of Project 2025. Privatization is taking over St. Louis Public Schools if we don't pay attention. And Opportunity Trust is a part of hiring people to come and antagonize the board. That's what Opportunity Trust do. They hire people purposely to come and attack public education, to come and attack boards, to come and attack the district, the teachers. That's what it's about. So that's what Opportunity Trust does. They hire them. They come, they lie, they put out false information, false narratives about what's going on in public education. So that's what it is. Absolutely not, I'm not in support of it. Thank you.
I am familiar with Opportunity Trust. I am a public school proponent. I've always been a public school proponent. My children are public school children. I am a public school baby. And I believe strongly in St. Louis Public Schools. Opportunity Trust has not given any money to my campaign or anything of that nature. I will offer this as a caveat. I have, as a school teacher, taught in public schools, charter schools, parochial schools. I've taught in almost every setting in a school district or a school setting. I will say this. Oftentimes, teachers leave the public school setting and go to other settings to make more money, which is why we need to pay our public school teachers a daily wage. So yes, I am a public school proponent. And my daughter, my granddaughter, excuse me, will be starting at St. Louis Public Schools this time of August.
This is an interesting task as a moderator. I think that this group is moderately well behaved. So the thing is, as long as people clap or shout or gur or hiss for a second or two, that doesn't bother me too much. But please do not repeatedly interrupt a speaker. Every speaker has a right to say what they need to say. Okay. We now have finished with the comments from organizations. The first person who's gonna make a question is Gwen Cobbshell. And she's gonna ask about her own question again. Gwen has one minute and every candidate will have one minute to respond.
I'll let you all some information about feeder schools. And we have a school that we've been fighting for, Dunbar. Dunbar is in the footprint of an NGA. It's a feeder school. It has a capacity to hold 500 students. They closed it right across the street from the Shion. So we could have put pre-K to eighth grade into Dunbar. They could have walked across the street to the high school and then they could have walked down the street to Williams Terrace College. So what we're saying is we want that school to, I just want to ask you all. Feeder schools are coming back in. Matter of fact, at Princeton, the freshman class, all six percent of the freshman class at Princeton comes from St. Louis Public School. But the difference is they have the curriculum that attracts the parents back to their school. They have the arts, they have the sports. So then has three people on their band. When we give them scholarships, we losing scholarships when we don't have the arts. We losing scholarships when we don't have football. So all I wanna know is can we get Dunbar back open? What you think about giving Dunbar back?
Okay, I think we are starting with Brian H. Marston. Is that correct?
So first of all, I think it is a beautiful vision to have Dunbar back open because that would mean you could go all the way from pre-K through high school. And forever, I think there was talk of UMSL. Was it UMSL? It was a college.
Community college.
Community college.
West side of the street.
Right. So you go pre-K all the way through college in your own neighborhood and just supported your community. I think that is something that should be factored in when deciding which schools to close or to keep open. And so closing schools is heart wrenching. You know, there's a lot that goes into that decision. But you know, when we have a declining enrollment and we have more buildings than we need and those buildings are expensive to maintain, hard decisions have to be made. But that is a compelling vision to be able to go all the way from pre-K through college in your own community.
Based off information you gave, the feeder schools seem like they're extremely important and it's helping our children out for success. And I think if we can't get Dunbar back open, other feeder schools should be given priority to make sure they're successful.
I would support it. And I will always and I will support what Harriet Tubman has led me to believe. And that's the acquisition of two vacant crumbling dangerous villains prevalent in the north side of our city. These villains, houses, vermin, and dangerous people. These vacant villains that the St. Louis Public School doesn't monitor. They don't sense security by these places, to run these people out of these schools. So I support taking two schools. And I'm not gonna take up my time to say anything else that we need to take two schools, provide a dormitory for boys on one and a dormitory for girls on the other. Dormitory slash shelters, homeless shelters. We have more than 6,000 children, homeless children in our community. And we need to be thinking about repurposing these vacant spaces.
Way back when I was in our public school system, we walked to school and walked home. My mother, like a great many other mothers, was at home and we were able to walk home, have our lunch, and turn around and walk back to school. And if anybody did anything, neighbors felt free to reprimand and report. But it was stability. And that is so important to children. So yes, I would like to look at having the grade school next to the middle school, next to the high school, and near a college. Community, community is important.
I certainly agree that community schools are, they can't be the backbone of any community.
I guess.
Bigger than life.
I'd say I'd certainly support that. Community schools, they traditionally can't be a backbone of any community. Feeder schools, I support it. I support it 100%. The issue is, can we get enrollment? And can we make it a successful school? And if that's the case, I'm behind you 100%. But if we can't get the enrollment and we can't make it a successful school, then we have to look at other options. And that's just, again, 100% options.
I definitely am in support of feeder schools. I think Dunbar could stabilize the community there. I am concerned if there's not enough children to fill a school of this size. So that would be something to consider. I also know that coming up soon, I know you're talking about closing X amount of board schools because the electric has been, the electric money will keep those that are running is open. So that could also be a way for Dunbar's schools to get into enrollment numbers up. But I also think they should think about how they present their school this time so they attract children, folks coming out of early childhoods who want to attend their schools. So if that's possible, then I think it's a possible idea.
For one, I would say I support the Dunbar trifecta area. And I'm also piggyback off Tony, because like what you're saying, there's a lot of things behind the thing that we don't even know. So I say that we need to really assess our situation. However, as an economic standpoint for our community, to have our children stay in the community to get to be educated is smart to me. However, getting our children back into the city with Dunbar, I think we need to focus on our marketing strategy on how we can catch our children. Because if our children are leaving Dunbar, they're going somewhere. All of them are just home and some of them are moving out. I am a Realtor in Missouri and I know that we can make our public schools attractive that our children come back. We need to first communicate with the children, connect with the families, connect with the communities, and we can make it happen. I'm delighted.
I think I'm the only principal on the panel today compared to the school. Teacher schools do work, so ma'am, that is a great idea. I don't know that you have a population in the area. However, several other individuals have said, if we do have the population in any particular area, a teacher school process would work. It beats from elementary to middle school to senior high school and then on to be able to not necessarily go to a community college or a university in that area because we want our children to be able to make choice once they leave high school. But it is a good opportunity to be able to involve all the parents in the community. When I was principal in Louisiana, it was, that's how we ran our school. We had to go to the feeder schools. So those are some things that we really need to consider for the board.
Feeder schools definitely is the direction that we're looking at. Dunbar actually was supposed, prior to me getting on the board and talking with the Alexanders and the team, is kind of what led us to looking at why it was important to do a citywide plan for education. Because it's gonna take a group of everyone coming together, not just the district, but the community, the businesses. but the community, the businesses, and exactly, especially what you're saying, looking at how do you bring housing back into that area to bring the population that's needed. So, those are the plans that we're actually looking at. And one of the biggest things we saw is that that area became an educational desert. We started closing schools down, housing became a challenge. So, you have to take different steps in order to do that. So, we are looking to move to bring more schools, but you gotta have housing first. You have to have that population that you bring in. And definitely, we want to have feeder schools to bring back neighborhood schools cause that's where the need is. So, I absolutely support doing something like that.
I also support feeder schools. I grew up in a feeder school situation, so I definitely know that they work. Thank God that we have begun to wind down the whole disaster DSA program. Hopefully, our city, our city population will stabilize over the next several years where the feeder school program can be revived and work well at St. Louis Public Schools. So, yes, I do support feeder programs, absolutely.
Yes, I'm in support of feeder schools also. But reality has a saying, our school system is fractured. We've got schools just spotted throughout the community. And so, we have to sit down with the city planning department to see what's happening in these neighborhoods and we can bring these feeder schools back together. I strongly support opening Dunbar. I fought to keep Dunbar open. I fought with Dr. Adams, who.
And how the people who graduated from there, how successfully they become. Of course, it'd be important.
We've been fighting. Keep it open forever.
Keep it open.
I would, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't Suffer the oldest African-American school in the city?
No, west of the Mississippi. But people all talk it once again. The answer is the oldest African-American high school west of the Mississippi. 1875, these were slave children who needed a high school to go to. So, we had to fight to get that.
Of course you did.
Of course you did, okay.
And I'm not, I'm not trying to take anything away from you. I'm 100% behind you.
Okay, thank you.
Write to the editors of the Posters Band. I do it frequently and say, hey. I know they had that thing in last Sunday's paper.
This past Sunday, they had 17 institutions that were celebrating Mount St. John.
Have you contacted them?
And they had Roosevelt, but they did not have Sumner. Yes, I have contacted them.
Okay, let me know, let me know what's going on.
My father went to Sumner, my mother went to Sumner, or my wife, Summer.
I'm definitely in support of Summer. Some folks have raised me, or some have graduated. I believe it was a great addition to our community. It's folks that I love, but are older now, so, yeah, I'm in support of it.
For one, I'm definitely in support of, but to go back to your question in the beginning about the Black History, this has to happen, has to be open. Because if it cut off the root of a tree, it died. Sumner is out of roots, it has to stay open. And not only has to stay open, it needs to be taught and educated and put in books and have anyone archive it, but it needs to be taught to our children, where it becomes from. So, yes, it should stay open. And as he said, it won't close now watch.
I just wanna say congratulations to Sumner, along with that, being able to stand strong and help foster that community, because that could be the why it's still there.
So, absolutely, we support the team. So, I'm saying openly, congratulations for the outstanding work that has gone on with Sumner as well as the outstanding principal that we have at Sumner, end of the world here.
I absolutely do support Sumner High School. And I just wanna say this and thank, thank our board president for mentioning, Dr. Wallace and those educators there have done a phenomenal job in turning that school around. And so, because it is historical, we absolutely ensure that.
Well, I, I might say something that you don't agree with, but it's facts and it's reality. Something high school was built to sit, 1,300 kids. As she said, which I was shocked, 400 kids enrolled in the school. But on the average, only 100 attend school a day. It costs $1.2 million to keep the school open. Hey, hey guys, you, you shouldn't talk when another candidate is talking. Because I didn't talk when none of you were talking, and I could have. What I do is, I look at facts, I look at data, I look at numbers. And it costs too much to keep the school open. Because, it costs too much to keep the school open. But that don't mean you have to close it. And that's what Dr. Adams was working toward, not closing Sumner. He was doing everything to just, and the reason that he doesn't have to close it is because you can find the funding elsewhere, just like they did when bringing in the city and the city took over a part of the school.
Bulldog pride is beautiful to hold and to remind you of how much a school means to a community. And I'm a, I'm a numbers guy, right? Like, I'm a math guy, a cheap guy. This is just a reminder that being on the school board, get the numbers and the heart aligned, and that it can be difficult. But I just commend all the people that have been involved in keeping Sumner open.
Okay, we barely have enough time for the last question before we have our final grow around. In my notes, I have a recognized woman in the blue sweater.
Hi, I'm Teresa Danley. I'm the PTO president at Mann Elementary School, which I guess is a feeder school and a regular elementary school. And I have a lot of questions, but I'm gonna limit it to one because of time. I am curious, you know, again, this is not the official question. I'm curious, who's actually been in one of our elementary schools recently? Cause they're amazing. I'm curious, yeah, if you've actually talked to teachers recently, cause they're amazing. Yeah, I have three kids and that's all, yes, so. This is my actual question. And if you don't know the answer, just say pass, okay? This is a complicated question, alright? It's okay. So, Blue from St. Louis DSA asked about nonprofits like Wash U and SLU that don't pay their fair share and about them doing like other meds and meds do on the East Coast, especially in doing pilots, payment in lieu of taxes. And there are lots of for-profit corporations that don't pay their fair share because they get tips or tax abatements that they don't need. Do you see this as a problem? And if so, would you work with the Parent Action Council to solve this problem? And again, you can say yes, no, or pass. Do you see for-profit corporations getting tips and tax abatements on the backs of our students as a problem? And if so, will you do your due diligence in reviewing these development proposals as you have the right to do, before they go before HUDs and the Board of Aldermen?
I don't quite understand the question. I don't care. I want you to ask me that question, please, again.
There are a lot of for-profit corporations that don't pay their fair share of taxes because they get tips or tax abatements they don't need. Do you see this as a problem for SLPS? And if so, would you work with the SLPS Parent Action Council to solve it?
There are a lot of problems with St. Louis Public Schools.
That's not what I asked.
I'm gonna answer the way I wanna answer it, too. And one of the problems has to do with the urgent need to remove the president and vice president of the Board of Education. There, there are many, there are many issues plaguing this community, financial. But if the very root of this problem is seated right there before us. There's a problem with money, whether it's nonprofit, for-profit, big business, much of which has been mishandled by these people from the Board of Education. That's my answer, I hope you like it.
I understand tips. I live in downtown where the 24th Ward about 14 years ago recalled an alderman because he wanted to bring in another gas station across the street from two others. And he sought to blight half of a block of personal property. I got on the bandwagon when he started suing people who objected. So, yeah, we need to look at tips, we need to look at whether they are siphoning money away from our public schools. And I would be willing to work with you.
I understand tips and tax abatements to a shallow level. I understand tips and tax abatements to a shallow level. But what I would say is, St. Louis, the St. Louis community has a lot of issues. And SLPS is just one of them. I would focus on our mandate to increase the quality of education before, before I really look at, start looking at the tips and tax abatements. But any proposal, any proposal that came to us, of course, I'm gonna do diligence. I'll try to figure out, hey, does this hurt the St. Louis Public School district? Or does it help it? But for the main part, it's, that's a difficult question to answer, yes or no, because there'll be things where, there'll be times where it won't help and times where it will. I just can't give a blanket answer to that. But to your first question, have I been in an elementary school in St. Louis? I've taught, I've been in elementary school here lately, but I've talked to teachers at Metro. And those teachers were absolutely awesome to me. That's, did you hear Bruce Metro? Metro's a great school. That's in every school. I don't, I, I don't want to put high schools against each other in, in the St. Louis city. We're all in it together, we're all trying to teach our kids the same way. I'm sorry, I would, I would wait long, sorry.
To your first question, I'm in an elementary school, St. Louis Public School, five days a week. To your second question, yes, I would do my due diligence on tips and tax abatements. I do think they're siphoning money out of places where they shouldn't. And then they give perks for things that they shouldn't ask for. I also think there's a better way for corporations and nonprofits and all of that to operate in the same space for schools and for this, where it's more of a benefit to both. So, that's how I would approach it. And as far as working with PAC, yes, I would be willing to do that.
So, one thing I'll say is, a lot of information comes to us and we don't have all the details. So, to properly answer something correctly, we need all the facts. However, tips and tax are there for incentive for developers. Now, I would definitely sit down with whoever, if they are taking money from the public schools. We have a board. Whatever the board has to do with that, then yes, we will talk about it, make sure that it's been used in the correct way. However, again, if it's taking money from the schools, I'm all on it. And to answer your question, every school that my son has been into, I've been told I couldn't come back because I've learned the children, read to the children. I'm so involved that the children attach onto me when I go to their schools. So, again, I would definitely sit down and talk to them. If it's coming out of the school public fund, I wanna know what's going on. And they should be of the kind for whatever it should be with the city public schools.
In answer to your first question, I go in 10 different St. Louis Public Schools regularly because the Horizon Teachers Program that we have has instructional coaches that go to those schools. And I supervise the instructional coaches. There are SLU coaches going in and out of schools. And with the tax abatement, I don't believe that anything has been taken from the schools. I believe you're saying that the, the, the money exists and that, that tax, if we advocate for that tax fund, can actually go into the schools. Is that what you were saying?
Then I'm gonna address that to my head for a commission. Tip and tax abatement is challenging and it's, it's kinda new territory for the board members. A lot of the boards, to me, has been, the board has had board governance, I would say, for the past five years. So, that's new, that's a new space and new territory. I know that we have been, the real estate community has been working with the PAC and, and trying to navigate that process, the tip and tax abatement process and understanding. We have been working with you all and moving that process along. There's been a lot of discussions that there has never been before, in my perspective. And sometimes we agree to disagree on some things, but I think we're making a lot of positive gateways. So, absolutely, I think that's something that we should, should continue to do. And I'm open to continue to do it. In regards to how many schools have I visited, I wouldn't say elementary schools, but I would say all the schools. I would say I've visited a lot of the schools on a regular basis, so, yeah.
I've been in about six different elementary schools in the last four or five months. Of course, because we've been looking for a school for our granddaughter. I am really in contact with many, many educators across St. Louis Public Schools on a regular basis. Many friends I have that work with St. Louis Public. Parent organizations are the lifeblood of schools. I've seen it, I've seen parent organizations like do phenomenal things. And I, as a parent, I've raised four children. I've tried to be a part of every PTO or every parent organization that my children, in whatever school that they may have attended. So, of course, I believe and will work with parent organizations. Because again, they do phenomenal things in regards to taxes and tips. Let me, again, I've said this before, everybody, I don't care if you're a dog, everybody ought to pay your fair share of taxes. Entertain, organization, it don't matter what you are, for-profit, nonprofit. I even heard somebody, let me say this, I even heard somebody call out churches. And as a former pastor, let me just correct you, churches don't pay taxes. And as a former pastor, let me just correct you, churches don't pay taxes, but they do pay employment taxes. So, I want to make sure that I make mention to that. But every entity, sir, every entity ought to pay their fair share of taxes. I absolutely do. I've passed it for 25 years. I know exactly what I'm talking about.
First of all, as evidenced by President Tony Cuzzers, the parent board doesn't, is not aware of what the heck a TIP or tax abatement is. They don't do anything when they was holding the TIP meetings and the two representatives from the school board sat there and voted right along with the other commissioners. TIPS does not hurt public schools. They help public schools. The tax abatement hurts public schools. Because if a project gets a tax abatement on their property, they freeze it at what that tax is for that year. That means if it's $100,000, it's froze at $100,000. But guess what? If it wasn't there, they may be paying taxes of $200,000, but it's frozen. The TIP does not become money until the bank take, until the bank buys the TIP away from the developer. That's why it does not hurt schools. It benefits schools. Example, the Paul McKee Project. If that project would've took off, the school district would've realized $348 million a
Note that the Paul McKee Project did not take off. TIPS are a reverse Robin Hood scheme that benefit well-funded developers and disproportionately harm disadvantaged kids. You don't have TIPS out in West County taking money out of the public schools. You need a TIP to make your development deal work. Maybe you shouldn't do it. A lot of developers do it just to juice it as much as they can and get as much profit as they can. As far as tax abatement goes, I personally, we have free properties with no tax abatement. And back to Mann Elementary, which is the school closest to my house. And my daughter went there for PK and I go skateboarding there because they have a really nice parking lot. And I have a kid in St. Louis, in a St. Louis public school, elementary school since 2012. Not the same kid the whole time, just to clarify. They get held back there when they talk to kids since 2012. And if you're not familiar with the Parent Action Committee and you're a parent, you should look into it. They do amazing work. They're organizing a trip to Jeff City to talk to our state legislature.
That's right.
I'm very much familiar with TIPS and tax abatements. And as a real estate developer, I'd say an option could be, instead of getting that abatement and actually keeping it that way, you could use a portion of your real estate deal to fund different schools in the St. Louis Public School System as an incentive.
Okay, folks, now it's time for the last one-minute comment from each participant. And we hope that people will mention whatever they think is most important tonight was covered, or whatever should have been covered tonight that people missed. So, we're going to start off with Terry Murray.
Well, I didn't realize that was a two-part question. Yes, I've been in our neighborhood schools in the past few years. I, I love kids. I'm drawn to them. Wilkinson was a walking distance of my house and was the first school to regain accreditation when the state took over the last time they tried to grab our public schools. The other thing is, you've just given me another reason why you need me on the school board, because I understand TIPS and the implications.
Listen, I just want to thank you all for being here in the eye. More than anything else, as you can see, I agree with so many things that so many of these board members said tonight. I'm looking for cohesion. I want to get rid of the dysfunction or the perceived dysfunction that's happening in the school board. The perceived bullying, I think, that's happening in the school board. I'm just, I'm looking to help out in any way I can. Like I said, I've been taught to me just about all my life. And that's, that's it. Thank you. My name's Andre Walker, senior advisor.
How can we get our parents more involved?
Twenty-three second answers.
How can we get our parents more involved in the school system? Oh, oh, man. Wow, you know, so again, as, as a board member, and that's, that's, we're in the governance business, but I would look to superintendents who can give us a holistic view of what, I would have, again, I would have a national search for superintendent who can give us a holistic view of not only to keep the families involved, but as you said before, to look at the STEM curriculum, to look at African-American curriculum, and look at things that work and don't work. But, okay, thank you, guys.
I care about kids. I've been here since seven o'clock. We've talked about a lot of things, but the structure of a school system was to start with children. In whatever capacity that we need to do that, and that's what I care about. I really don't want to argue or really even talk about semantics anymore when it comes to children. I have a daughter, she's 12 years old. She's been to six schools in the last four years. Without, without me having to worry about semantics, I never would've found it unpleasant for my daughter to help her to start to improve. That is the type of insight, that is the type of commitment that I have for other kids. My daughter is the one of many. As a board member, beyond governance, we have to be thinking about how our governance impacts kids, how our decision-making impacts kids, how our support for teachers impacts kids, how the superintendent we choose can help lead the people that are supporting kids. We have to center everything we're doing to children.
Again, I'm Tayvon Brooks. I am a community product of a public school. I represent the community. I am a realtor. I'm a proud father. I am the president of FTR Alliance. I manage the South when it comes to show me peace. It's nothing about community. There's a saying that says, you cannot solve a problem with the mindset that created the problem. I have a different mindset. I've traveled the world, all over Africa, all over Europe, and I'm here to share solutions to our school. I'm Tayvon Brooks. All I ask from you is to investigate me thoroughly. And if I fit the person to be on the board of our public school system, then I'm the man for you.
How can I do that? And I have a principal voice. I don't need this microphone. But I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight because your voice is very important. You lead communities in different aspects, either unions or neighborhood communities, boards, other organizations. It's important that we hear what you have to bring to the table and what you would like the board to be able to solve and resolve as a part of this vast community of education in St. Louis Public Schools.
I'm Dr. Karen Collins-Allen. Sure, I want your vote, and I want you to go out and be the community to tell them that I'm highly qualified for this job. But I want you to understand that I work hard, I've worked hard all of my life. Children are important. Their education is important, and I give everyone the story when I do professional development. That funny-looking kid in the third grade class, that front row might be the child that saves your life. And when my mother had a massive heart attack many years ago, when they wheeled her in, she looked up in that one roosted moment before they had to put the paddles on her and she said, "Okay." And it was Dr. Katie Ferdinand, someone that had another request.
I think the takeaway is, I, I just would hope that we would kind of do away with the false narratives about St. Louis Public Schools. Let's look at this really one-on-one, and I, I like to see all the people that are out there, and I would hope to see all the same people that are out there are providing more support to St. Louis Public Schools. The false narrative about the kids can't be, there are so many great things and movements that are being done in St. Louis Public Schools. And let's focus on that. And there are things that need to be worked on, but how about we work together and start doing that? Our children are struggling with all the negative themes that we continue to demonstrate. And right now, there is an attack on public education. And if you don't see what's happening right now, today, with Project 2025, you better wake up. Because they're trying to privatize education.
I decided to run for school board because I wanted to see the school system that my children are attending be a stellar school system. And I believe with all of my heart that St. Louis Public Schools can be the crown jewel of this city. It takes a lot of work. Yeah, there are a lot of problems. But there is not as many problems as we think. And if we pull together and work together, we can make our school system the crown jewel of this city. It's the very reason why I moved from the county to the city, to send my children to St. Louis Public Schools. And I need your vote. I need your help. I'm currently the only person on this panel today who's in a classroom every single day. I know what happens. I teach at Cardinal River, Cardinal River College Prep. And the reason why I teach at Cardinal River College Prep is so that I can run for the school board. I make no bones about where I teach. But I'm an educator nonetheless. I'm an educator nonetheless. And I believe that I bring a unique perspective to this particular race that can turn our schools around. Students will always be first for me, and I have proven that in my 13-year career. I need your vote. Thank you.
Hey, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. And I want you to keep something in mind. That's why we're, you see 12 candidates up here, because the current Board of Education has let you down and have let our kids down. Please, please, research every one of these candidates on this stage. Please, find out who is going to take care of educating your kids. It's important. I got three votes, just like you guys do. I heard what all these candidates said today, and I've got to make up my mind who to support. Who has my kids' best interest at heart? You do the same thing. And I guarantee you, as you hear us go for the next two months, you're going to see a different face every time. Mine's not going to change. I'm not going to tell you what you need in here and what you want in here. I can't share a vote. Our school system is in trouble. As you saw, they tried to, they tried to provisionally appreroat us, but they couldn't do it by law. We're in trouble. Thank you. My name is David Jackson. I'm number four on the ballot.
Thank you to Legacy Bar and Grill for hosting this event and to all the sponsoring groups who were ready to listen to the tour. Most of all, thank you to all of you for caring enough to be here tonight. Our public schools are worth caring about. They're the cornerstone of democracy. Both are under attack. Monday, it wasn't just MLK Day, the day that Freedom's Church burned to the ground. It's also inauguration day. We've got some difficult days ahead. The district and the board have received a lot of attention lately, most of it negative. I'm hoping we can work together to take that attention and turn it into positive outcomes. My campaign site is at B R I A N H M A R S P O N dot com. I've got yard signs in my car if you'd like one.
My whole career has been towards helping the youth. Every dollar I've donated has been to the youth. Currently, all my board work is geared towards helping the youth. Using that experience, I'm going to use that towards, if I'm elected, to the St. Louis Board of Education. You can look me up on LinkedIn. I'm a full-open book. If you like what you see, go for me.
I'm William Bill Monroe, and my catch-up is Donaldson five is me. Now, I'm, I'm smiling, but I'm a bit distressed right now. I'm distressed because I've been here since 6:30. And not one word, not one word have I heard relating to the safety and security of our And this, this school district, I contacted this district, and if you would, go to any U2, we, what the school board is, and go to the three hours we set, wait to speak. And though I haven't been to many schools lately, because I've been banned from all St. Louis Public School programs. And I've been banned because I...
Thank you very much. Listen, I have a few closing comments. Glad you asked. We have five-year-olds on Front Row who passed out during the program. I don't see anybody else asleep in here. This has been a truly lively and invigorating discussion. And I want to thank all the members, all the candidates who are here. I think we covered a lot of territory. We saw a lot of differences. We saw a lot of similarities. I want to thank the organizations that worked with me to put this together. I have worked with a lot of people who sometimes won't tell you if you make a mistake, but the groups that I've worked with are extremely good, extremely good in telling me everything I did wrong. And I really appreciate that, because if they hadn't told me what I was doing wrong, I'd be directly doing right. I hope that everybody thinks, heard a lot from candidates that you take home with them. And I hope the people who are groups can make some decisions about who they want to group to. Thank you very much.